And hello, everybody. Welcome to Ambassador Program Town Hall fifty three. And today is June twentieth, and we are here with few community members from the Ambassador Program, and we're here to share some updates and some mentions. And then let's see where our open discussions takes us. Today, Peter is having fun, and I hope he will be blasting hairs off where he is in the festival. Our agenda today is to go through some mentions and like, and then have like a workgroup update. And yeah, who are ambassadors? Let's start with an intro. Anyone who wants to learn more about Singularity and ecosystem and contribute its growth. So starting from the the spinoffs or in general, like having a view vision of decentralization. You have a place here to play around, mingle with good friends and and people who are aligned on similar like mission statements, missions that to do something together effectively and also help along Singularity and ecosystem at the same time. And usually we do it as contributing to like similar projects. So we come to meetings. We discuss in Discord channels and other social media, which people different people are using. And fair, we come up with ideas, we sometimes make proposals, and basically we come to the we always we don't do decisions, we simply say, oh, that's a great idea. And we give people the room to to execute on that idea. And we also have a small treasury to to incentivize these kinds of activities. And how do we do it? Yeah, basically, I just went through that. And some ambassadors work together in self-organizing workgroups, which are formed to focus on specific projects and and activities of activity within the program. And yeah, coming to the first point of like mentions. Anybody here has a new meetings or events that are coming up or something you want to mention in this program?
Yeah, thanks, TiVo. I'd just like to mention that there's an archive workgroup tomorrow at, I can't remember the time now.
Thirty UTC.
Ah, there you see, people are well informed, the news is spreading. And so come along, as TiVo is so excited to. So if TiVo is excited, then that's a good indication. So come along and in the in the first part of the meeting, it's me going for a project board and updating the project. But the second half of the meeting, we have Vanessa going through GitHub or using GitHub on. So if you want to sharpen up your skills, come along there and you can find out all about that. Thanks, TiVo.
If no one else is going, I'll talk a little bit on Strategy Guild. Last week, Crandano hosted both Incubation and Strategy back to back. And we did a whiteboard on the third quarter budget and restructuring of the Ambassador Program. We're trying to wrap it up by the end of June, so we're ready to go July first with the third quarter. We will be doing the same thing tomorrow. Crandano, I think, indicated he's he'll be off this week, so if that's the case. I would invite anybody that would like to host and run the whiteboard for the two hours to step up to the plate as the author of the new budget and restructuring. I would, so I avoid personal biases, try not to be the host. I would rather be a participant. But if no one steps up to the plate, I will run it. And tomorrow, Tuesday, I think it's eighteen and nineteen hundred UTC. If I I'm not sure, but I think that's the times we will be discussing. I don't know if you, yeah. So eighteen and nineteen UTC is Incubation and Strategy, and we'll be discussing the new budget proposal and restructuring of the Ambassador Program. And we're also looking, one of the big comments has been entry level into the program. Should they be called ambassadors? So we're looking for a different name. So please join us tomorrow. Thank you.
On top of that, I could add that this week's Treasury Call fifteen thirteen UTC on Thursdays will be supporting the Strategic Guild output of information and also adding the some rules and information to the Treasury document from other perspectives. So we have multiple options to to make it tight and good.
If anyone has a question, go for it, man.
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm so I came across this Singularity Ambassador Program on Twitter, and I'm still confused. Like, are there going to be rules in the Discord, like, so everyone can know, like, so, yeah, we should, yeah, we're ambassadors or something like that? I don't know. Are there going to be like rules or like some people will know that that these are ambassadors for Singularity or something like that?
TiVo, I thought you had the screen. There's a whole getting started, and it takes you some time to read into and to start to learn what the program is about. But yet a bunch of ways to participate, actually. Therefore, we have the Guild Center workgroups. I really would recommend going to the Discord, going Getting Started. And usually you will see Sukran Spice always be around as well, helping you get on board via the Discord.
Yeah, I wonder, we have this onboarding workgroup going on now. But that was it's a new latest meeting. I don't remember what time it is. Does anybody have any clue? Was it Friday or Thursday?
Onboarding happens on a biweekly basis, and this is on Thursdays at thirteen hundred UTC.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and this is a great place to start. And even this channel also, when you when you browse through it, I see now some guides, which can also help you do get some cool tips how to get comfortable choosing the information of what's happening, because it's a it's a quite a lot of people are actively involved here and doing activities, so asking questions from.
Efrem, are you also known as Michigan in Discord?
Yeah, 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 yes, yes, that's my like my web three name, but this is my real name from somewhere.
Okay, pleasure to meet you, Efrem. It looks like you had a long conversation in the Ambassador General channel with Sukran, and she sent you the form.
Yeah, yeah, I filled the form. I was trying to like get acquainted with the whole stuff.
Okay, good, good. So this is a great place for you to start. You're getting to know some of the leaders here, some of the the ambassadors and the workgroup leads. Sukran does handle the onboarding, which gets your, hopefully you entered a wallet address. And TiVo puts that into the D Work system. So when when and if you choose to do a D Work task or join one of the workgroups and and the D Work task is put out, you can earn some AgeX. And there's all different types of D Works. Kenichi, I think, is online right now, and he heads up the Writers' Workgroup. TiVo hands heads up Translation, while more for the senior translators. Usually Rojo is online. He handles heads up video workgroup. We also have a marketing workgroup, a strategy workgroup, usually doesn't throw off any D Work. But there's all different ways of hooking into the system to earn some AgeX. If you're left brained and you have a library or precision type of thinking, I I believe onboarding is looking to start bringing some members in. There may be some a bit of a new experiment. So you just kind of have to come to the meetings, get to know us. We need to get to know you. And welcome and thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Lastly, I don't know, like, when do the tax kickoff or something? I had I had to say something about translation and other tasks. So like, when do they kickoff? Like, when when is there like a timeframe for us to do the tax or something like that? I don't know.
Actually, what you can go do is go on the D Work space already. Best is to sign up with your Discord account. And closer, let's bet a little bit through the space already. And usually you will find some first, for example, to a first bounty or directly go into different spaces. The work is like a project management, but we a little bit and it's directly to Discord. And that's actually where all the, let's say, guilds and workgroup work is getting is get done. And there are open tasks and bounties also, where you can simply start to apply to engage. Then you communicate with the guild and work group leaders there. And I tell you how to further them, apply and work with the task, and that's pretty much it. But there's no keep yourself like steady, because, yeah, there's no clear, easy onboarding. Onboarding happens through a long time of constant engagement, actually, and participation. But, yeah, we recognize engagements, and in the best case, yeah. Help you as well building up your project and with an ambassador's program, fortunately, one day.
You're already halfway there, because you somehow got to a meeting and quite a good one. This Downhold usually give like an overview of what's happening in all parts of these activities, what communities involved in. I will continue to share a bit about Process Guild. And today, we will be going through again these agenda items, which we have had in the backlog and what's upcoming. And we're going to test the A B C D to-do list model and do some motherboard voting on that and see if we can reduce the complexity, and it's like another fun activity we could do and see how does collective hit mapping work on on this experiment. On Treasury Guild, I shared a bit on translators' workgroup. They're currently like a slow time. The current translations that are completed are not yet still put onto the original, like articles, so so the remarks will be delayed still. And right now, yeah, I think upcoming week, we are having this like monthly report coming out at some point, so there will be at least one set of new translations coming up in at least like in two two weeks, if nothing else has popped up already. What else? Yeah, T Work PBL is a is a cool event that happens biweekly, but not this week. This week, at the same time, is archival workgroup that was mentioned. And which is also another one, good hands-on learning workgroup. Where in D Work PBL, we are working on creating markdown files and and onboarding methods. So exactly, I just saying what is this, what we just did here, but we have a website to give people to onboard to some kind of skill set and or an experience. And yeah, from also tomorrow in Singularity and Process Modeling Workgroup, we will be do some planning. So if you like to do like some processes, processes of like visualizing activities and like thinking how to do things and and roadmapic planning. You you may like to join on Wednesday, see how we work, and if you're into it, there is a room to to jump on board and and contribute. About mentions, so we jumped into workgroup mentions, but I will also say that last weekend, there was Artificial General Intelligence two thousand twenty-three conference in Stockholm, where Asia shared basically a lot of like Singularity shared a lot of documentation of the developments that they have been doing. Different spinoffs were mentioned, Hyperon, Two AGI, Hypercyclers, assume too, and basically had a cool, like, science dropped into to the public of what's happening and where the directions are with AI. So tools who are interested, they are on the Singularity, you will find live streams. And over the time, you will be seeing like scouted versions to and more information about it. If you use Twitter or any of these other social devices, you probably have seen a lot of pictures and and insights. In that case, now it's basically an open round. Like, do we have any other questions, ideas, thoughts?
I have a thought and a question. Earlier today, Felix and Vanny and I were on a chat, and the conversation came up. And Felix has brought it up in earlier. And the question is, what do we want to? What's in the name is the question. Okay, I guess that's the real question. What is in a name? My name is Tommy. How are you? Would you understand or recognize if I call myself Thomas or Tom? Probably, maybe not. So what's in the name of an ambassador? What does it mean to everybody? And Vanny, and we've had this conversation, means someone from like the United Nations or someone from your country that represents your country to other countries or to the United Nations. So we have the moniker of Ambassador Program for Singularity Net. Is that the correct term? We we Felix is a funny guy. What do we think, since we have a free session here and no one else has brought anything up? When people first come into the program, what do we think the name should be? Should they be called Tommy? Hey, Tommy, how you doing? Oh, Tommy, I'm fine. How are you doing? And do we think they should be called ambassador? Oh, hi, ambassador. How are you? Who are you ambassadoring to? Are you ambassador to to Bitcoin? Or are you an ambassador to to, you know, AgeX or Cardano? We're not really all ambassadors. The the seniors, if we go to Roundtable or something, maybe they're ambassadors, maybe they reach out, maybe they can talk about all the projects. We get to that stage and we can be ambassadors. But like if Benjamin, if he's still here, and I'm on an iPad, so I don't see everything. As I told you, my two, my grandson Angus, who somebody saw again today, kicked my laptop out of my hand and broke it. So it's at an Apple Store getting fixed on my iPad. Do we call ourselves engineers, community builders? What do we actually think someone like Benjamin, and I'll use you, Efrem, I'm sorry, not Benjamin, Efrem. He's a newbie. If he comes in, is he an ambassador? Does he even know anything? And Efrem, don't take this personally. You're just the example. Or do we have a different name for newbies? And what should that be? And then do the, as you get to know the system after six months, whatever the time is, do we then become ambassadors? I'd like to discuss that. And by the way, my name's Tommy, if you didn't get that.
I will. In my opinion, everybody starts as a contributor, so maybe that's a role.
Okay, maybe it's a D worker. Maybe it's a contractor. That's a good name.
But that would solidify us into being using T Work forever. Not all the forever, but like.
Exactly. I I don't like the work D worker, actually, because most of our stuff we do outside the work.
I'm spitballing right now. I'm I'm not, you know, just pure spitballing, ideating.
Like some sort of, like, one main problem, I think, is what we have is in the when we started with ambassadors, ambassadors have been a little bit everything, right? Guild leads and workgroup leads and ambassadors and builders and moderators and facilitators and whatnot. So we actually see, okay, what the ambassadors did in the past. Though usually I I'm a little bit not so sure with roles in general, because roles kind of suck. And we just aim to describe what a certain group of people is doing. And then very often we run into this problem that we set a specific scope for a group. And then the individuals in the group have fit to the expectations of the definition of the group. And actually, I quite limited to step out of this and say, hey, no, I'm fucking me. So we somehow need this categorization simply to have a minimum of coordination. But what I would like to mainly get rid of is this mental hierarchy, which is established already through the last four to six months, I would say. Where people join, say, you may become an ambassador directly, like dude, what the fuck? You don't even know what this project is about and already want to become an ambassador? Why? Why are you so fixed on stupid career moves? It's not like you're an ambassador and now you're a demigod in Singularity. Fucking no. You don't have any super permissions. You just have shitload of volunteer work to do, so. But, yeah, the people somehow enter the program and said, directly, main goal is become an ambassador. And like, several topics, so I went through that. I think in general, just to say, what would we expect actually from an ambassador? Because it's almost as programmed action, say, oh, okay, we see we are not that much ambassadors. We were more like programmed builders, engineers, some sort of this stuff. And what's other roles that we saw in March, but to not yet recognizably, there was something like this. And differentiate much more what we before tried to pull all in one single role, which still didn't work.
Yeah, you know, always like, and it's it's very much, in in some ways, it's it's an Asian and European system. My German partner had explained it to me, and it has to do with apprentices. And you you come in as an apprentice, and I think there's a stage before apprentice depending on the system, and you have to work X number of, you know, to get there, and then you go and you become a guild member. And and then eventually you become a master, you know, but it it takes a long time. But it's it's kind of like it was an early schooling system in in Germany, I know, some parts of Europe, and I know when I was in China. They they use a very similar system, especially in in Qi Gong or in in martial arts. It's and and maybe something like that is what we needed. I I don't know. But I don't know what you'd call it or what you'd call the people.
Do you think there's any, sorry, do you think there's any specific expectations that are associated with the term ambassador, Tommy? Do you think that creates false expectations?
Well, I I think, Stephen, that there's a whole subculture that was created in Bitcoin and ETH with some of the pay to earn or pay to play. And if you can get a moniker of ambassador, I was an ambassador for the secret agent, secret network. You can use that to elevate yourself and give yourself a certain, not doxing, but in a way doxing, but a certain amount of credibility. And if you're a scammer, you can use that to sell yourself and and elevate yourself and create a bigger scam or things like that. So, you know, the cautious, the risk manager side of me says, yes, there's a danger and that certain people want that title or moniker just for nefarious reasons. And the other shoulder, the good side of me, just says, hey, some people just want to belong. They want to. When I grew up, you were a Cub Scout, and then you became a Boy Scout, but you always belonged. And I think it's human nature to want to belong. So if there's a group you join and they're called Tommies, you want to be a Tommy too, so to speak. If they're called ambassadors, you want to be an ambassador. And that's just, that is just human nature, Stephen. I I don't know if that answers the question.
No, I kind of agree. I think there's that sense of belonging is something we want to encourage. But then there's the problem of what what that means to different people and different cultures, yeah. So for some people might want to belong to Tommy, or some people might want to belong to ambassadors, you know. Some people might find the term ambassadors a bit, you know, someone who just treats people with chocolates, you know. But the, you know, so it's kind of, I sort of, often the roles create expectations when people, and also it could be like a roadblock, couldn't it? Just because people just want to belong, they just want something. There's a lot of people that could just be looking for something to do, I suppose. That's the other thing.
True. That's that's very true. You know, I I had looked and bounced around a few different projects, and some was like the secret agent for the secret network on Osmo. One of the best design programs, you you had to create. You had to achieve certain things to get roles. And, you know, the secret agent was the was the big role, because then you were a full-blown ambassador. But for me, it was, you know, they were making you jump through hoops, which I I didn't like. But I I think when people come in, initially, they should not get they should be part of the Ambassador Program, but I don't think the title ambassador should be bestowed on them. I don't know what the name should be, but they should have an inclusive label or name or title. But I think there needs to be a certain tempering before an ambassador label is is given to them, very much like your knighthood or knighthood of old, Stephen. And and that's why I like the name Roundtable. But, you you know, when a groom was chosen, what did he? What did he do? He shoveled the horse shit and took care of the horse and oiled and did everything else. And then maybe he became an aide or whatever the terms were. You know, if he was of royal blood, he could become a knight, and some not royal blood. But there was a system, and and I think that is is this program. I mean, it's, we just celebrated the the first birthday, I think, as the system grows and evolves. We we should have a system to elevate trustworthy people to, and I'll say this with a a little snobbery in voice, but I think it's more a sense of accomplishment to the vaulted role of ambassador. And and I think it should be something of trust, reputation and accomplishment. That that's how I feel about it.
This conversation reminds me of, I was I was reading a book on open source, and I heard a reference. I mean, you're probably as old as me to remember that, remember this in the nineties, Tommy. But a book by Eric Raymond called The Cathedral and the Bazaar, and the different ways of working for open source. And the cathedral is like the medieval way, where you have specialists, small groups of people who build things. And the bizarre is where you have like a marketplace of people, where you have like lots of different people coming in. And they're not, they don't have a specific role, but they still do the work. And so hence the term the cathedral and the bizarre. And but a lot of recent research has shown that in collaborative environments, you do, sometimes you need a more cathedral model. You need, you need, you need people who are small groups of people. Because with large groups of people in a bizarre situation, you get, it can be great, it can be great to have a free-for-all. But then people do not know where to go. They don't know, they don't know how to, where they belong and stuff like that. So I just thought I was just put out there.
Yeah. Yeah, and and that's kind of a long line of what Felix had labeled as a cellular, small a cellular, small cellular units, I think, something along those lines. Uh, you would, you know, with like an organic, uh, growth of those small cells. And, and haven't we kind of done that with work groups and guilds?
Just pretty much like what is actually emerging.
I would say, yeah, it's like a holocratic model. And I think when you mentioned, uh, like belonging, I guess there, what we, we don't have and perhaps we should have, we, we kind of inexplicably, we still have it. It's like being part of something and in Discord, they are called verified members. And maybe that is like, uh, like very, yeah. Like they're increasing the, the importance of, and having like this kind of checkmark. Hey, you joined in the meeting, you were a real person, you're verified. We know that you're a human and not somebody who came past, stopped, did some link, some, some, something, something, and then left. But you, you, you show your interest and then perhaps like starting with, uh, with then like a very, very outward thinking. Where some people are called like lurker, so they are part of it, but they are not, uh, they, they're not there to contribute. They just want to know that there is happening something. And they sometimes want to check in how people are doing and like starting contributor from very outward and then you're coming closer to, to, yeah, some smaller and smaller groups with specialization.
I think also when thinking about ambassadors and ambassadors program, ambassadors program does not forcefully mean that you have on the get-go ambassadors already, right? So for example, it took us actually one year before getting to the, let's say, very first official ambassadors, somehow a little less, but whatever. I would say, okay, we see already that the people which ambassadors right now are more bolders and whatnot. Though, it's a program. So why not simply saying, okay, the purpose of this pro- program is already to cultivate ambassadors? When this process of creating ambassadors actually through the program takes fucking three years, then it takes fucking three years. It really takes time to build a really strong expert, I would say. And the ambassadors program does nothing else right now than to build a frameworks that we are able to cultivate these experts, let's say. We don't have them yet, but we have potential. And when we do it right, we can assert this potential and let it grow like in a garden. Assuming we don't have the fruit sets, we planting the seeds and setting the crop. And our job is not that much being ambassador or running behind this role, but much more to say, okay, let's set the environment, let's set the framework, let's see what grows already. We can influence the growth and we can say, hey, okay, we keep care that everybody's growing well and all. Though, we give it really a month or a year perspective and say, we don't have ambassadors yet actually. But we want to cultivate and that's the program about.
And we cultivate them by transferring knowledge from people to us.
Ephraim, if you're still on, let me ask you a question. We're, we're all OGs. You're the newbie, so to speak, to this group. What would you coming in, expectations be if you needed a label or name? What, what do you think you should be called as, uh, you know, in your first month, your first six months, uh, of the ambassador program? What do, what do you think is a good way to handle that?
Yeah, um, I think, um, an actual name for that can be like a ranger or something, people that work for your project or something. I think that's, that's just a name that comes to my mind, aside the ambassador, since like, um, we have not gotten to the level yet to record an ambassador. So I think like a ranger will be something that's, that we'll do, yeah.
I, I think that's a pretty good, and, and I love that from the, uh, the Lord of the Rings trilogy. I, I always thought that was a great name and I, I love English mythology and I don't think it's mythology. Uh, Arthur and the knights of the round table and the round table itself, what it signified. Maybe, maybe we just ideate and come, come up with names like that. You start with a ranger, someone that's out there and bring it in. What, what does the group think of that? And thank you very much for participating.
It's always dangerous to think on a theory and then impose it on participants. That's just fucks up things. From my perspective, the only roles which are led shit are those ones who emerge by necessity from bottom up. You don't plan them, you don't pre-name them and give them a duty before they already exist. This is for example, where strongly I coined the round table idea, right? If the round table is really a valid thing, let it emerge, help it to grow, but do not predefined the whole scope. That's one of the main tasks of the, of this, you write to figure out, okay, how should it actually look like? So I'm really quite fanatic on let things emerge, documentate them and then recognize them. Rather than building theory first, impose it on participants and force them to lose their authenticity in action.
Yeah, I'm very much.
I would like to.
Oh, sorry, go.
Uh, no problem. Uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I like to, um, uh, vie a bit for that. I feel like, uh, now Felix is bright in, in a way. And also, you know, uh, if we're to look at it in that light, I can see contributors there's a bit closer to it. Like, because we have people coming in, uh, what do they want to do? They want to contribute. They wanna, they wanna give us, uh, you know, their time, their, uh, their skills. They want to, they want to actually contribute and add value to what this we're building here. And they, you know, they want to enter the ecosystem, they want to actually offer an ant. So I feel like, you know, contributor literally already exists. It's just a question of, uh, what exactly would it mean before giving them that tag as contributors? So I just feel like, you know, in, in the case of, you know, letting stuff emerge that this is already happening. Yeah, where they have people coming in and they want, you know, in, you know, based on the name of the project, uh, as an ambassador program, they want to. Maybe we just need to help them and, you know, the, the, not a bit, not really hierarchy, but, uh, you know, it's a bit of a formal structure in a way that explains that, okay. Um, you know, maybe the, the ambassadors, uh, later on shift to, let's say, builders. Uh, yeah, clearly like community builder in a way, or like just builders. And, uh, then these builders, you know, you should understand that not only my day like, um, facilitates meetings and do all sorts of things, or lead work groups or come up with initiatives moving forward. Uh, they can also mentor you on to becoming an ambassador. And let's say, uh, then we now give ambassador a, a whole new meaning itself. So, yeah, I mean, so contributor is a bit more, uh, fits the niche right now of what it is this, uh, on boarders are literally committing to do. And, um, let's say from when they become contributors, then they start to select what is this exactly? You would like to contribute towards, is it the translators? Is it the writers? Is it the videos? And, uh, or would you just be, you know, volunteer with, uh, volunteering their time and their, uh, abilities with maybe strategy or incubation or, you know, Apple's idea towards, you know, building this, uh, community faster and better? So, yeah, uh, uh, I guess it's still a question of, uh, us now expanding what exactly it's a mean and what exactly, you know, it's gonna, I still feel like this still has a lot to do with the onboarding, work group or the onboarding sector. So when people come in, uh, a way to like, uh, maybe like, uh, uh, first page stuff, like maybe before, before when they try to verify themselves on our Discord server, there's a message to read or something after that lets them understand that, okay. Uh, right now, after verification, you become a contributor and then you can join the call and then have a, you know, uh, conversation with us on how it is you like to actually contribute.
Yep. Like having a contributor and then once you kind of specialize on some work group or group, then you can remove the contributor and actually give the rocks because many work groups and groups have their own roles already. So that would give a bit, that would already mean that you're a contributor if you have any of these roles. So it's not part of coming to, to specific role, but acquiring some yeah, experience, helping specific, on, 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 on specific projects people are doing here.
For example, one thing what could be interesting, just looking back and see already one role which emerged, we didn't thought about artists, work group leads and work leads. Where we see, ah, they are somehow needed only in regard to the treasury system and to, you know, for some rights, let's say, opening a Zoom call or being able to moderate the Discord channel or whatnot. Did we see, ah, we actually don't forcefully see roles emerging, but responsibilities. I think that might be a really interesting perspective also to say, that's because I think we see, ah, we need people who have an access on this, on that, on this, on that, in order to operate the system. Ah, Zoom and Discord, that's right, and My Board and Google Docs and Treasury System and whatnot. But now we try to map responsibilities and roles actually. Right?
Yeah, and we map them over time when we clearly see the need of that. Sometimes we actually already have roles and we kind of feel that somebody is something, but we don't expressively give them the, the like visual role to do that. And like in D work or in treasury system, but we kind of inherently feel like they're part of that. Um, but over time, as it grows, it usually will shape up to be a role in Discord too. And then it will be more visible for the newcomers to, oh, this role exists. There are a lot of roles that exist, that are like infinite roles that exist in ambassador role and actually. You just need to work your way up to create that role. And if you are the first one to do create that role, you probably have much easier time to acquire it. If there is already people who, who have been recognized as that role, then it requires some kind of coherence with the, with the teams themselves, the activities until they acquire requirements, whatever they may be, are, are, are like that, until you get the role.
Could be some sort of a statement. Join our guilds and work groups, or join the centers or become the centers or whatnot. And if this role, if the existing stuff doesn't fit for you, just hang around, uh, half or a year on volunteer base, have enough time to spend in three years. You most likely will try to write your own role.
Uh, 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 what if instead of a predefined term, such as contributor, plenipentarian? So I don't even know if I can pronounce it correctly. What if when people come in, we, we call them Sofias? In, in deference to her and the, the whole AI robot thing.
More call them people? Are humans, what? Or something? That's the Sophia as her own branding already, right? And not sure if we want to mix the branding from a for-profit enterprise with, uh, passion-driven contributors in an ambassadors program. Might be some misalignment simply by, by default.
I would return to the theme, I think Vanessa said it in chat, and also Kneecue was, um, uh, it's not the time to talk about names, talk about what you need to do, talk about activities before names and defining our roles. Role, from roles to emerge, you need to do something. You need to have a sense of belonging. In my view, belonging comes from activity, you know? And the best way to be active in something is not to have any barriers like of, of titles or something like that. I suppose that speaks to the problem of why is there such a focus on defining who we are rather than what we do? What we do is more, it comes first and then we may decide who we are later.
Agree. Naturally, I don't give shit about any roles, but a lot of what people do. Yeah, you can call yourself the CEO of whatever stupid enterprise, I don't give a shit. It's, yeah, stupid ass, all in, don't do stuff, okay, but.
I only like roles when it makes efficient to share information or disseminate or kind of delegate. And it, it's easier to do it in groups for me because I find that it's like the massive information rather than individual catch-up and coordination. Um, but yeah, it takes, takes a while before the actual group kind of emerges and the understanding. So it should be carried towards that, but actually doing stuff.
Well, you make, you make a good point, TiVo, though. I'm, I'm countering my own argument here. It's that sometimes you do need a role when you want to know who is responsible for something. So it's not no roles, it's just not putting people, you know, putting people into boxes at the beginning. People will, will do things, do activities, and then they will take on responsibilities. And then maybe that's the point where you need to say, okay, TiVo has this role, Felix has this role, so that you know who to go to, who is responsible for things, I suppose. Maybe that's a counter.
Actually, it sucks that time is over because one thing we could do actually collectively, because TiVo, we took a lot of time with the treasury girl, but just going through tasks. And just show us, for example, the categories we are, we have been able to define, right? Like, because we have quite a system in the treasury sys- uh, treasury system already where we differentiate lots of different engagements from each other through categories and cast, but only for the treasury system. But that's a, I don't actually shitload of stuff always from this. I think, and there, it's not speculations, that's just looking back on data, actually, right? And say, ah, okay, we know there's a content creation, there's a meeting, there is a setup, there is a whatnot.
Yeah, I think in treasury grid, we can, as, as we do this treasury doc and also in the strategy grid where they're creating this kind of, uh, I can overview, I think fine tuning and coming to some kind of, uh, uh, document, uh, that we all kind of see. Yes, that's, it's used them as a base case of the, the structure to go through. I think, yeah, looking, looking at the lists would also in, 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 inform the, the, the structure of what we may need and what we are missing. But, um, other than that, I will actually call the end for downfall. Uh, we went through work groups, we went, uh, through some mentions and we spent time thinking of, uh, roles and shared a lot of information what ambassador program about. And welcome the new person. So we got stuff done. And now we have few minutes, uh, time to, to take a breather and then process will be kickoff and start with my reporting.